Keto and crime, keto and crime. We uncover the crime on Keto and Crime. Keto and crime, keto and crime. Now is the time for Keto and Crime.
Hey everyone, welcome to Keto and Crime. How is everyone? I'm so glad to be back with you. Today we got another one of those spooky rampage stories. This one happened in 2008, just outside St. Louis, Missouri, in a small little suburb known as Kirkwood. Were a gentleman with the nickname Cookie. Put out a lot of sprinkles. No, that, bad Tracy, you can't joke about this. I do this with humor. It may not always seem that I'm in the best taste, but I do try to lighten it with humor because some of the stuff that I talk about is very dark. And if I didn't laugh, you know, it's like I might be, you know, writing books like Chad Daybell and we don't want that. So, yes, uh, he took out his aggressions on, uh, the Kirkwood City Council. And that's what we're going to talk about today. But first, wanted to talk about some, uh, if you guys ever want me to do a video on mean comments that I get, I'd be happy to, but this week has just been the trolls are out en masse. I told that I was, uh, I was fat phobic because of the reaction I did to the Biggest Loser reaction. I was fat phobic, that I was fat shaming, that, uh, oh, and somebody on my, uh, Mary, uh, one of my true crime videos, uh, Mary Bell told me that I was just a busybody that liked to talk about other people. And, uh, somebody today on one of my cult videos told me that I will get my punishment when Yahweh returns because these people are speaking the truth. And you know what I say to all those people? That's what I say to all those people. Not fat phobic, I'm not afraid of myself. I am not fat shaming. That doesn't mean what I think a lot of people thinks it means. It's not just, yeah, that's fat phobic and that's fat shaming. But that's not what I'm doing. I'm just, I just drew attention to the fact that being obese, and I'm not talking about somebody that is 200, 230 pounds unless you're like, you know, under five foot, like four eight or something. I'm not talking about that kind of fat. I'm talking about over 300 pounds, 300 pounds plus. And there's not a person, except maybe linebackers in the NFL or, you know, college football, that are healthy and I even question whether or not they're healthy. It depends on, you know, muscle to fat ratio. Well, they're healthy. All I say is nobody is built to be 300 pounds plus healthily. It's just, it's not a thing. And I don't care what religion, race, gender, you know, male, female, everything in between. I don't care what you are, that's not healthy. And that's all I was saying in that video. So, I know that my true subscribers were not, not offended by that, but I just wanted to put that out there. Also, uh, I want to give a shout out to Sensible True Crime who actually told me about this case. Uh, I had never heard of it. It's just one of those things that slipped under my radar, so I had never heard of it. So today we're going to enjoy it. If you'd like to support the channel, I've got links down below. Patreon, uh, you can join membership, super, uh, super tips, all that stuff is down there. Or if you want to support those that support me, my sponsor, Keto Crisp, I still use it every day. I've lost almost 30 pounds. I hope you can tell. Feel very, very good. I'm doing new, but with a low carb twist. So it's, uh, working out really, really well. And, uh, Keto Crisp is a huge part of what I do every day to keep sugar cravings at bay. So, trigger warning for product placement. But if you want to support them, my discount code is down below. And with that being said, let's jump into the background on Cookie Thornton.
Shift memorial is growing outside. New details are emerging about the deadly shooting rampage inside Kirkwood City Hall. Police say Charles Lee Cookie Thornton stormed into a city council meeting Thursday night and opened fire.
The meeting had just started and everyone had just, uh, did the pledge of allegiance. And we were sitting down and I heard a shout from the back of the room. And I recognized it as Cookie Charles Thornton's voice. And I had heard him yell something about a gun.
Two police officers, the city public works director and two council members were killed. The city's mayor and a newspaper reporter were wounded before officer shot and killed Thornton.
The thing that I feel most bad is the people that have been, that didn't make it. And there was no reason for that. I mean, just seeing him shoot someone without a guard, it's just, that, that shouldn't happen in this world.
Friends and relatives said Thornton had a longstanding feud with city officials. Just 10 days ago, he lost a federal free speech lawsuit against the St. Louis suburb. And he previously received 150 tickets against his demolition and asphalt business. Gerald Thornton says the legal setback may have been his brother's final straw.
It led him to believe that he only had the actions of declaring war against the persons that were causing this strife in his life.
Thornton left a suicide note on his bed which read, "The truth will come out in the end." His family believes the note reflects the brother's growing frustration with local leaders. But Arthur Thornton said his older brother wasn't a violent man.
He's not a mean man. He's a loving man. And this was a violent act. It's not Cookie.
And Arthur Thornton offered condolences on behalf of his family.
Then I am truly, truly sorry. You know, it's a very sad event.
Charles Lee Cookie Thornton was born December 23rd, 1955, in a working class, blue collar family, uh, in Meacham Park. It is a unincorporate, unincorporated, predominantly African American suburb area. Like I live in an incorporated area, like technically I carry the name of the city that I'm closest to when I put my address. But technically my area, even though there's a huge, uh, cluster of subdivisions and houses out where I live, it's not been annexed by any city. So, that's kind of the area he grew up in. It was a unincorporated, predominantly African American community that bordered Kirkwood near St. Louis in Missouri. He did well in high school, played sports, uh, no real signs of aggression or psychosis to be noted, uh, as growing up. And then he attended, um, Northeast Missouri State University, which is now known as Truman State University. Uh, did not, could not find what he actually major in, but I'm going to venture it was probably business. Because as soon as he, uh, graduated, he came out and became an entrepreneur. He started his own asphalt and demolition business, um, and started doing construction contracts around the St. Louis area. Uh, now, because the area in which he lived was unincorporated, rules are really lax, uh, when it comes to laws and civil ordinances, all really, really, really lax. I can contest from having lived in many unincorporated areas, you know, people tend to turn the other way. And that's typical in, even in incorporated towns in the south. Now, I know Missouri was a border, you know, was a, a border state during the war between the states. But technically, it's more southern than northern. So, in small towns, you typically learn, you know, to look the other way. So they don't really enforce them, especially in an unincorporated area. And so because he had started his business from the age of 22 on, he had, over time, built up a huge collection of heavy equipment that he used in his business. You know, mixers, uh, cranes, uh, dump trucks, uh, flatbed trailers, just think heavy equipment that he had built up. And because it was an unincorporated area and laws were not enforced, or there was just no laws on the book, he was able to basically park all of his heavy equipment in residential neighborhood. And he could park them at his house. His, some of his neighbors would let him just park it in their driveway. You know, I've only got one car, sure. And as a result, he would, and to pay them back, he would often use leftover asphalt from bigger projects to pave their driveway. Or, uh, do other work for them around their house as payment for letting him park his heavy equipment, saving him thousands of dollars in rental fees to rent a place to store them. And nothing wrong with that at all. And all went well until 1992, when a ballot proposal appeared before, uh, Kirkwood City Council asking them to annex the Meacham Park area. So basically Meacham Park, once both petitions by Meacham Park and Kirkwood were approved, it would become part of Kirkwood, Missouri. And all civil ordinances would now be, of Kirkwood would now be civil ordinances of the new part of Kirkwood as well. And this, even though Cookie had supported this annexation and had rallied his community, it would off, in time, be his undoing. Uh, according to his brother Gerald, Meacham Park was always proudly independent. Um, they, they governed themselves, they helped each other, pretty cognizant in the fact that he was able to park his, you know, his brother was able to park his heavy equipment in neighbor's drive on a bargaining system. So that's just kind of the area that, uh, they grew up in and everybody was happy about that. However, by the time that Cookie and his brothers and sisters had graduated high school and went on to college and got jobs, it had changed. It had gone from a very blue collar, um, semi-ruled area to one of urban decay. It was joblessness, crime, drugs, and nowhere to get actual public services from. A lot of volunteer services, volunteer firefighters. It was serviced by the St. Louis County Sheriff, and nearby volunteer fire, you know, fire departments, EMS. There was really no services. And so, for the betterment of his community, Cookie and a lot of local, uh, business people supported his annexation into Kirkwood, knowing that tax money would now come in and there would be police and a paid fire department, paid EMS services. And it would just generally make life better for the residents. However, what he wasn't counting on is how the new ordinances might affect his own business. So, one thing Gerald said is that their parents taught them to always stand up for their rights. That they told them to do it the right way, through the court system, through legal channels, through peaceful protests, that sort of thing. They were never taught to be violent or take their aggressions out. And that's how they handled this campaign to get the annexation done. You know, there was a lot of petitions, walkarounds, door knocking, and it passed. It absolutely passed. So, during the late 1990s, after the annexation, early 2000s, Cookie was trying to get an inroads into the local government. He ran for Kirkwood City Council in 1994, though unsuccessfully. But he had made enough contacts in being a huge player in getting, uh, the annexation done, that he felt that he had been, that he should be getting some of these large government contracts, uh, that were going to happen once improvements came. According to Thornton family, Cookie asserted that he had been promised some of these contracts for his help in getting Meacham Park annexed. Kirkwood council members said the opposite. Now, there was evidently no written confirmation of this. So it's kind of like if you don't write it down, it didn't happen. When you're dealing with government, if you don't write it down, it's certified, it didn't happen. So that's kind of what we have to go on. But according to Cookie, he had been promised these large contracts. And he felt wronged because he didn't get these contracts. And in addition, now that they had a police force that was actually patrolling the area, he started getting tickets and citations for parking commercial equipment in a residential area, therefore racking up quite a bit of fines. However, Cookie still continued to fight for the improvement of his community. Um, there was a proposal that came down to turn a large section of what was once Meacham Park into big box of a Walmart, a Lowe's, all these big box commercial developments were wanting to come in. And in addition, it would basically level the Section 8 housing that was there and then come in and put up private homes. So this was a huge juicy contract. And so Cookie bid on the contracts. He also went out and campaigned to get people's approval and helped them win that, that proposal to get that huge development done. But never got a contract. According to him, he was promised to be able to do some of the demolition and lay the asphalt for this entire subdivision, or this entire commercial division. It just never happened. In 1999, Cookie filed a complaint with Equal Employment Opportunity Commission alleging racial discrimination and the fact that he was not awarded any work during the sub, during the creation of this commercial division. Uh, the mayor of Kirkwood at the time, Marge Schramm, said that they never promised Cookie specifically any contracts. She's, she simply said that we strongly encouraged minority businesses to be considered for these contracts and did set aside a certain amount of contracts to be given to minority business owners. Because remember, this was a predominantly minority area. But she said, "That wasn't just Cookie, that was all minorities and they were all welcome to bid on the contracts." But ultimately, the contractors, the major general contractors that were hired by the city, because remember Cookie is not a general contractor, he lays asphalt and does demolition. So it had to be farmed out to larger general contractors who bid on it. There's a bidding process for most municipalities, state governments, federal government. You go through a whole procedure where you bid on it, you have to release certain forms and tax forms. And they choose you based on your qualifications and most importantly, how much you say you can do the project for. And it was up to Cookie, who would have, it would have been up to Cookie who was a subcontractor, then to pitch himself to the contractors, not necessarily the city. Cause the city has no say in who those contractors subcontract jobs they don't want to do out to. And I think that might have been the misunderstanding. Yes, the city can recommend, but they can't go to this general contractor and force them to hire this subcontractor on the books. I mean, I'm not, I know government can be quite greasy and I'm sure that has happened in the past, but it didn't happen here. And so as a result, he filed this complaint for racial discrimination, but nothing ever came to fruition because they found no discrimination because there was lots of minority subcontractors working on projects around the city. Also, December of 1999, Cookie had to file for bankruptcy because he was still parking his commercial equipment in residential areas, receiving at, up until about 2001, about 150 tickets. And he said he always assumed he was grandfathered in, but that didn't happen. And he actually ended up going to court. A member of the city actually negotiated for him and helped him get his fine down to $20,000. Court order, he could settle all these tickets for $20,000. So saved him a whole bunch of money, more than cut it in half. Because he had fines and penalties, because remember you got tickets that are over a year old that haven't been paid. And so a government official helped him negotiate it down so that he could afford to pay it. But he ended up having to file for bankruptcy. But unfortunately, civil fines don't go away with bankruptcy. After his bankruptcy, he actually paid four months, four payments of about $4,400 towards this $20,000. But then stopped making payments. And he quit housing his equipment now in a commercial place that he had gone out and rented to avoid any further fines. So to add insult to injury, he goes out and he moves his equipment from that commercial property, quits making payments on it and makes, moves everything back to the residential community. And guess what? Tickets start being issued again. I, I don't understand the mindset. I really don't. And, uh, he kept doing business around town. Uh, on the side of his businessman, he put signs that said he would never again accept the lies of the Kirkwood, uh, city councils. So he would driving around, putting these signs on all of his commercial equipment and just generally making himself a nuisance. Uh, he started showing up at the Kirkwood City Council meetings alleging a racist conspiracy and, uh, basically throwing names, throwing people under the bus. Um, he also assaulted Ken Yost, who was a city engineer who was actually trying to help him. He came out to discuss with Cookie, saw Cookie in his yard doing yard work. And he stopped and walked over to talk with Cookie about all the violations because he had already been fined, more tickets up to about $12,000 at this point. As well as talking about how his actions at the city council meetings are not helping him. So he actually went over to discuss with Cookie some kind of peaceful resolution. And, uh, Cookie assaulted him by throwing, uh, straw on him. Now, he wasn't hurt, obviously, but you did just assault a person and assault a, a public official. So he was, uh, actually convicted of that and fined as well. As well as, uh, he continued to receive fines. The city eventually stopped at another hundred tickets, so 250 tickets so far, and another bill of $20,000. So he owes the original 20 minus the payments he paid, plus now another 20. He still didn't give up. From 2004 to about 2006, he filed several lawsuits against Ken Yost, who was now public works director and the city of Kirkwood alleging racial discrimination and basically all manner of malfeasance. Uh, it went as far as the Missouri Court of Appeals, because he lost in regular court, went up to the Missouri Court of Appeals and they dismissed it, saying that his allegations were largely incomprehensible and advised him to get a lawyer and not represent himself, which he had been doing. Which, if you've ever talked to anybody outside of maybe traffic court, it's never good to represent yourself. Um, after many years of these different lawsuits, the city again goes to Cookie and offers a settlement. They will excuse all the fines. He won't, he won't have to pay those. And they, and if he would just drop these lawsuits, stop spending his money, stop spending their money, just drop them, no harm, no foul, and to quit disrupting council meetings, they would forgive all the tickets. He even refused that. So I, I, I don't know. I don't know. Uh, it seems to me the city was acting pretty fair in, in this, uh, in this scenario. What do you think? Let me know. He kept going to city council meetings, interrupting them, telling all the residents in, in the gallery that they had plantation mentality. They were letting this city council run all over them. He was calling members of the city council and the city government names. Um, he would not stop. Uh, he called the mayor, who was at that time a man named Mike Swobda, a jackass. He, uh, carried signs that said the mayor's a liar, the city council's a liar. In fact, uh, the city attorney went to him, uh, John, John Hessel, and actually had another conversation, trying to get him to stop and they, they would forgive everything, just stop. But he wouldn't. In fact, other residents of Kirkwood, the Meacham area of Kirkwood, were getting pretty upset. Many of them were quoted as saying that the city council never recognizes him, they never call on him, but he will stand up and scream. He's even been known to lay down in the aisles and cry like a baby. And many of them had just said, "Stop, just stop." Everybody was getting sick of Cookie. In addition to the 2002 assault on Ken Yost, the public, public works director, he also was handcuffed and arrested at a couple city council meetings for disorderly conduct. Mayor Swobda actually stated after his arrest at that, at, uh, at a June 2006 council meeting, that they would continue to deal with him professionally and, but would not let his rantings sway the due, due process of city government. Uh, in June of 2007, he was charged with a misdemeanor assault outside PJ's Restaurant there in Kirkwood, where he was picketing outside and began assaulting the owner, literally pushed him down and started stomping on him when he came out to ask him to move along. That criminal case was still pending at the time of the shooting. Uh, he filed more lawsuits against the city, they were all dismissed. Um, one of them got all the way up to a federal court in 2008, where, in which Thornton had alleged that the city was preventing his free speech by being arrested at a council meeting. He was counseled by the judge who said that was preposterous. Your, your right to free speech was not inhibited. Uh, but you're, you do not have the right to disrupt and become aggressive at a public forum. And that's why you were detained, not to silence you. Uh, anyway, the city was hesitant to involuntarily commit Cookie. They considered locking him up in a mental, uh, institution for 96 hours under forced observation to see if they could get him some help. But they were hesitant. They said, "That's just don't, how we don't, we don't do that around here. We just don't do it." So, they basically had released him into the custody of his brother. February 7th, 2008, Cookie Thornton arrived at the Kirkwood City Hall just before that night's council meeting. He parked his van on the side street near the city hall and actually saw Kirkwood Police Sergeant William Biggs, who happened to be waiting outside a nearby diner to pick up his dinner. And Thornton then confronted Biggs and shot him outside before he ever got into the council meeting with a Smith &amp; Wesson 2944 Magnum revolver. It killed him instantly. However, before Thornton could fire, Biggs saw him pulling the gun and had sent out a general distress signal on the police radio to bring in additional officers. Thornton took Biggs on own sidearm and went inside the city hall. So he's not even pretending, he's not even going to sit there and then just, kind of like, uh, others that we've talked about. No, he just went in full firing. Uh, he made it to the council chamber just after the pledge of allegiance. And the mayor was basically calling the meeting to order with about 30 people, including the council, in attendance. He entered the back of the room very silently and started edging his way towards the front of the room over the course of a few minutes. He had both his Smith &amp; Wesson and the police, and Sergeant Briggs as well. So, he got close enough to one of his first victims and fired instantly, killing police officer Tom Ballman with a headshot. And then turned the other guns toward the city council itself and began firing. Uh, he was screaming, "Shoot the mayor, shoot the mayor, shoot the mayor." He killed 51-year-old Connie Kerr, a city council member, as well as another city council member, Michael Lynch. He shot and killed Ken Yost, remember the public works director that had tried to help him several times. He shot and the mayor, Mayor Swobda, twice. However, he would not die instantly, he would be hospitalized. and the mayor, Mayor Swobda, twice. However, he would not die instantly. He would be hospitalized, but die seven months after the shooting due to his injuries. He also, uh, fired at the direction of the other four council members, missing them. He chased city attorney, John Hessel, who had, was throwing chairs at him, kind of, kind of slowing down. I mean, he's coming from the gallery toward the council table, so he's now chasing John, Mr. Hessel into the chambers, and he's throwing chairs, trying to, trying to slow him down. Of course, police are now descending on the city hall. First two officers arrive and immediately ran into the council chambers. Uh, Thornton hid behind, uh, the podium up front and continued to fire. They returned fire and shot him dead with two shots. In total, he killed five people, including the mayor, who died some months later. Next to his bed, his brother turned over a note he found to, uh, the police that simply said, "The truth will come out in the end." Uh, the people that he killed were instrumental in moving Meacham Park forward. Bill Biggs, that police sergeant that was the first to die, he was known as the coach of Meacham Park. He coached all the little league sports. Uh, Connie Carr, council member, was on the Improvement Council. She had been one of the major players in getting the area incorporated. And, uh, as well as Public Works Director, Yost, who was trying to work with him, and, uh, the city attorney, who did survive, but was also shot at, who was trying to work with him, and the mayor. The mayor could have thrown him under the jail many, many times, but because he wanted to be fair with him, simply continued to restrain him and let him out. Now, I don't know if that was the right thing to do or not, but I know it's the southern thing. It's the country thing to do, to try to help your, your neighbor. So maybe that's what they were trying to do to Mr. Thornton. But I think Cookie Thornton was his own worst enemy. His business did not have to go bankrupt if he had just obeyed city ordinances. He could have been forgiven of all of his transgressions if he had just agreed to stop his campaign. But I think at its heart, he felt he was entitled to those government contracts and the big money that can often come with them, and that was his major motivation. That, and of course, I'm sure, mental illness. But that is the story of the Kirkwood Council massacre. I hope you enjoyed it, and I'll be back soon with another True Crime video. Until next time, Keto and Crisp.